All right, I'd like to welcome, it's seven oh five, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to welcome everybody to our first meeting of December, which will be our only meeting because we only have one in December. This is our business meeting. And the first point on the agenda will be anyone who signed up to speak to the board. Just like to remind everyone that we like to limit remarks to five minutes.
We have two people per session.
Look, face this way if you're addressing the board. Although obviously you're addressing everyone else as well.
Hi, my name is Shema Hahn of the Canacherry School District for seven years. I'm in sixth grade. I'm involved in band orchestra course, the student council, a bunch of sports. And just attended the Spenden.
So I just attended the...
Spenden.
Okay.
I made an honor of the semester. I love going to this school. Because I've made friends here and I have nice teachers that I can trust. But I won't be able to go to this school anymore if tuition is charged. I personally don't understand why money is more important than educating kids. If I have to change schools, it would mean I have to start over with new friends and new teachers. I wouldn't feel safe, as safe as I do now, starting over at a new place or school. I would really like to be able to stay at Canacherry School. And I hope the adults can figure something out so that I don't have to move, so that I don't have to move schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Just for your information, I'd like to know that is on the agenda tonight and we will be addressing that issue. Okay, Ross?
Heather Murphy. Hi. My name is Heather Murphy. I've been here before, just last month. I've done some research regarding statistics in our area regarding the last few years. Through my investigation, I've noticed that a trend has happened since 2011 when this school last charged tuition for students to attend. The trend that I noticed is a decrease in populace by a few hundred people, which to most may not be significant, but for a small area such as this it is. The most important statistic I noticed was that we went from a twenty-one to twenty-two percent poverty rate to an almost twenty-nine percent poverty rate in the area. So with that, of course, that means the average family income has dropped quite drastically in the last almost ten years. I've noticed this to be almost $10,000 in a decrease for family. Meanwhile, the cost of living has steadily inclined through not only our area but the entire state. The cost of homes and renting has increased while wages have stayed stagnant. When we run the numbers, we find that with the average median gross income being just over $30,000 a year for families, these families are usually just barely able to make ends meet for their homes. It costs roughly $1,000 a month to maintain a home, whether it's rented or owned with a mortgage. That is with the bare essentials, your rent, your mortgage, lighting, heat, your taxes, water, sewer, et cetera. So we know that the gross income is not indicative of what families actually bring home and that's the only thing, the only statistic that you see is the gross income. So we know that that is not indicative of what families actually bring home to utilize to survive. So let's run some numbers. The average family is making a little over $30,000 a year, anywhere between thirty to thirty-five thousand a year. After taxes are taken out, they're receiving less than $30,000 a year to live on. Subtract $12,000 a year to simply have a home, go from about $28,000 to $16,000. Now, that $16,000 has to pay a car payment, insurance on said vehicle, food for the home, clothing, internet, which is a necessity in this day and age. One, possibly two phone bills, depending on how many adults are in the home, medical insurance, co-pays, vehicle maintenance, and any other little things that can go wrong. I'm sure I'm missing a few essentials here, but you get my point. That sixteen K is not going to go very far, not to mention the kids and their extracurriculars. Oh, and let me not forget about the cost of a babysitter for parents who work long or extra hours because they're already struggling. By the way, a report was just released from the State Department itself stating that parents cannot afford proper childcare as it is throughout the American state currently because of the cost of living. Many of us parents, myself included, in this work multiple jobs, long hours, and spend enough time away from our kids already just to afford the bare essentials and to give our kids some extracurriculars to help catapult them into the outstanding adults they will one day become. My kids are deeply involved in sports, from football to soccer to baseball, basketball, and dance classes. As my son stated, he's involved in student council and music programs. In order for me to find the $2,000 a year to send both of my children here, I would have to either work more hours than I already do, which is way too many as it is, or tell them that they can no longer have those extracurriculars because mom can't afford them and is still afford for them to come to school here. In a place that they've been going for seven years and have come to love and appreciate. My children have formed a deep bond with their educators and friends here at Canacherry. I voluntarily chose to send my children here because, as I told you before, I'm an alumni of this school. I received my education from some of the best humans and teachers that I've ever had the pleasure of knowing. I feel deeply rooted here and want my children to receive their education from these same wonderful individuals that gave me mine. I live 200 yards over the line for the school district. Two hundred yards. I live directly between both of these schools. I understand why taxpayers may be against me because my taxes don't go to Canacherry and they go to Fort Plank. This is an argument for all of us to have with the state itself and not between each other. We can discuss with them how funding is distributed, but I believe this is something that we can conquer together instead of making the out-of-district kids and families the enemy. During some of my investigation, I've learned that part of the issue is stemming from how money is allocated by the state. At one point, it was based on student census and I understand that now that's not how it's done. The new format of distribution of funds not only negatively impacts our kids here but kids across the state as a whole. I believe this is something we can all advocate together for our kids, for their, for their education. My personal opinion is that no public district has the right to charge tuition for students. Cap on a student-to-teacher ratio to ensure the education of the children is being met appropriately, I absolutely agree with. But to charge tuition to an especially poverty-stricken area is just another attack on this poor folk. This is a battle I'm very willing to help you with and have against the state if you believe as much as I do that this is something that should be modified. You know I'll fight tooth and nail for this school. I've done it before and I'm willing to do it again. I would also like to say that I don't appreciate the implication that the school has to shell out any extra money towards food for out-of-district kids. That was something that was mentioned in the board meeting last month because I did sit and listen to it. We all know that's not accurate. Because of the out-of-district kids and because of the poverty in this area, the state funding has been allocated to feed all of these kids for a few years now, breakfast and lunch. It was explained to me that currently the state cannot decrease its funding to a school. It can only withhold extra funds going forward. I was also made aware that this can change at any time. So what happens if next year the state changes its mind? What happens when you have kicked out these out-of-district kids and are now left with a lower census than before? Now, funds are taken from the in-district kids living here. I can tell you this, should the tuition implementation stay, I'll send my kids to Fort Plank where I pay taxes. And I absolutely will not be sending them back to Canacherry once they realize the tuition implementation was not enough of a benefit as they thought it would be. The anguish these kids will feel adjusting to a new place...
Five minutes is up, are you almost done?
I'm almost done. The anguish these kids will feel adjusting to a new place, new teachers, new environment, curriculum needs to be considered before this decision is 100% final. I had a few questions during my private conversation with the president of the board and the superintendent. These three questions still have not yet been answered and I'm looking forward, hopefully, having an answer about them tonight. I disappointed, I am disappointed these questions were not taken into consideration by the board themselves when the discussion and the vote was had last month. How much money did the school receive upon the implementation of a tuition fee the last time? How exactly was that money beneficial to the in-district kids? And why did you go back to open enrollment the following year immediately? I already know the answer to that last question and it's because it didn't financially benefit you the way that you thought it would. There's no other answer. The chances of it being more successful this time and the poverty rate has increased is even less likely. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my children, and many other hard-working parents who have not been able to attend today or previous meetings because they are busy working late hours and extra jobs just to make ends meet. These are the mothers and fathers of Canacherry, alumni, most of them. I'm speaking on behalf of a friend whose child, whose two children were dismissed from this school despite having the help needed here that they could receive. They were still dismissed and forced to go to Fort Plank School. I'm speaking for those who cannot speak for themselves, with children that will undoubtedly be negatively impacted by this move. I thank the board, President Brody, Superintendent Fitzgerald for having that conversation with me. I urge you guys to go review the comments please.
That is. Okay, first point on the agenda is the student reports.
So, between this time and the last meeting, there was the Fill the Bus Food Drive. And during that time, as you've seen at the entrance, there were large amounts of food being donated. And that was then placed on buses and sent out to different locations. And different students really enjoyed the opportunity to give back to the community and to be part of something as important as this. The first movie night was on the seventh of December. That was the Polar Express movie night. There were lots of, there was a lot of excitement. People came in pajamas and there was hot chocolate and popcorn.
How many people? About?
Just about one.
Hundred people, yeah.
Nice.
Star Week is coming up and that's always an exciting time around the holidays. There's going to be, people are going to be coming in their pajamas. There's going to be hats and socks, holiday hats and socks, red and green Thursday, ugly sweater Friday. On December twentieth, there's going to be a star day where people have chosen different activities to go to throughout the day as chosen by a poll on Google Classroom. And the large breakfast would be held that morning. And it's also an exciting time where there's a lot of chattering and preparation for the day. And winter sports have begun since then. Of course, that's always a joy. Today, the chamber course, we went on a tour to two different nursing homes in Johnstown. And then the Pelican Nursing Home and the Arkell Nursing Home. And it was a really enjoyable time of going out into the community. And they certainly enjoyed our presence because even, even though certain people were not necessarily responsive initially, you can see that music definitely widened up the atmosphere. And with yesterday's concert, that was another enjoyable time where, you know, we got to show the hard work that we put into our music program.
Any questions? All right, thank you Tyler. And the concert was very inspiring.
Everybody should listen to WGYI.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a report from the Policy Committee. Take it away, Policy Committee.
Okay, well, we talked about, we started with scheduling and routing. And we are making, which is policy five seven two zero. And we were revising some of the wording thereabouts, which to change into kindergarten and first grade will be picked up and left off. They're places of residence rather than just kindergarten children. Students residing within a mile of the high school will be expected of Canacherry rather than the village limits. So there was some changing of wording. Then Part G, the walking distance to pick-up points varies according to grade level. We changed that to grade levels two through five rather than one through five. So it's just some changing of wording there. Then we looked at seven one three one, which is the non-resident students. And we discussed grandfathering the current students and their siblings in, noting that it's a year-to-year policy that's going to be looked at. But we would like to be able to grandfather them in and then assuming that there are places that we would have first preference and possibly a lottery for those students in those families before we admit others.
So is grandfathering the current students?
Yeah.
So no tuition and then the other is first preference would cease?
Okay, so that anyone who currently has kids in the school district, they would have first preference for any additional siblings that would want to be in the school district?
They would have first preference on any openings.
On any openings and they also would not be asked to pay tuition for either the current students or any of their siblings should they come in?
Correct.
Okay, is that clear to everyone?
The, the language for this, we were going to have the attorney write up. And so we don't have final language for the board to actually do it. But that's what our recommendation is. That's what our recommendation is.
And the last one that we looked at was class rank on our policy seven two two three. And we were talking about changing some of the language for that. And then we are going to come back and review it again. And Mr. Fitzgerald is going to get some additional information from some of the teachers.
Just review the policies.
Any questions? I have one, which is, so I'm assuming we're not going to vote on any of this tonight, but we'll have it ready to go down in January.
Hopefully, we're going to get it.
Thank you. Okay, the next...
Can I just review?
No.
The transportation policy is looked at because it currently states that no one's picked up. Everyone in the village has to walk. If that's not the case, we have a couple stops. So the policy had to be updated and it's pretty much within one mile of the high school. So that's just the verge change. Yeah, we updated it to our actual practice. The policy has been updated, but the practice was appropriate. But the policy didn't say what the practice was. Seven one thirty-one, again, the tuition, the current students and siblings will be grandfathered in for tuition. But remember, it's a two-pronged approach. One is it's an annual piece, meaning that every year that policy has, that part of the policy has not changed. For example, if twelve fifth graders came in next year, for example, and who lived in our district, and now we're upping it over a certain amount of students, we have to add another teacher, then, you know, there's a possibility that an adult student will not be able to attend. As the kids get older, that's a little bit less than they get in tiny school and middle school because classes are a little bit, it's not as important as the course selections. And the annual piece is important because we want to make sure that this year doesn't incur additional costs. And the lottery would be included only for the students who went over and above and we didn't have enough spots. So again, the current students and their siblings would deserve first preference and there would be a lottery for other students after that. We'll draw that up and we'll have that for July.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next, which is a presentation by our high school principal about commended students regarding the National Merit Scholarships.
All right, everyone. So first, Eric's here, stand up, Eric. So that's Eric. Eric took the National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. So it's a, it's like a SAT, measures their ability, how well they're going to do in college. So about 1.6 million people in the country took it and Eric was in the top 50,000. So what that means in percentages is that Eric did better than 97% of students in this country. He was a top 3% of students in this country. He was absolutely... So he's been given an award by, it's a letter of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Program, commending him on his outstanding efforts. And really, this is the beginning of many more good things. Really academic genius and you can really do anything you set in mind. So Eric, excellent job.
Okay, and then the next point is a presentation on Restorative Justice and High School Scores.
So do restorative practices, yeah. Okay, so. Yeah, we're in there. Okay. So, restorative practices. It's a social science that studies how to improve and repair relationships between people and communities. The purpose is to build healthy communities, decrease disciplinary throws and antisocial behavior, repair harm and restore relationships. So that's the definition. Basically, restorative practices are used to find underlying causes of behavior and then seek to find solutions to those causes. So really, there's a big focus on showing an offender how their actions have damaged the broader learning community. So anytime there's some kind of discipline that causes harm, whether it's something, you know, as simple as talking out in class and it's something as severe as fighting, causes harm to everyone in the learning environment. And so really, restorative practices like this shine a light on how is, how is what you're doing affecting the community as a whole? And then how do we fix it? How do we not just, you know, discipline and move on from there? How do we actually fix those behaviors?
We're just changing over to the other presentation.
Thank you. I was just kind of rolling with it.
It's the same thing, but it's just a little...
Yeah, it's a little prickier.
Well, there's a couple other things.
Do you have your outfits planned out for next week?
What was that?
Do you have your outfits planned out for next week?
Of course I have.
Uh, rather than...
I mean, there's not going to be any Super Mario involved, like, yeah. I mean, if I could find a way to work it in...
A Christmas sweater, Super Mario?
I mean, one day is dressed like an athlete, so if I get a tennis outfit and put on the Mario Cat. What do you think Tyler, would that go overwhelming, Mario? You know what?
And then I'll be standing up front.
You've at least got me thinking, so.
Is it a four?
That is a technical...
A medical... Oh, that's a, that's a bit important. It's easier to have a visual function of a, it's getting...
Yeah.
There it is.
What was it?
Sorry. Function of...
Restorative.
And then you can tell them to do...
Okay. Let's go back one. And that's an important point. Okay, so this is a really key point here. Restorative practices are used to enhance traditional discipline, not as a replacement. Restorative practices kind of get a dirty word among teachers and some, a lot of schools. And the reason why is people see this as a replacement for a traditional discipline. So sometimes the perception, this is not true, but the perception is that if a school begins to move towards restorative practice, they no longer discipline. They just say, oh, you know, talk out your problem and then that's it. And there's no, there's no consequences to go with actions and a result. It's too soft and then the whole school kind of, you know, descends from there. That's really not true. If implemented correctly, restorative practices enhance traditional discipline, not replace it. And what I'm going to be talking about here is some examples. Every situation that I'm going to go through now are things that we've actually done since I've been here at Canacherry. So every situation I'm showing are based on real situations with the real students that we've done. And so I kind of want to say, well, how are these things typically handled in a school using traditional discipline methods? And then how do restorative practices enhance that? So first one, a fight, right? That's the most severe. So what happens? Students are suspended from school and that's important. You have to protect the safety of the students, you have to protect the safety of the learning environment. You can't have kids just fighting. Students, you know, usually three to five days is typical for a fight. They're out for a few days, they've been given time to cool down. And then they come to school and act like nothing ever happened. Everyone just kind of hopes, well, you know, they fought it out and they've calmed down, so, you know, they're good. And we kind of hope it goes from there. But typically, the underlying cause is never addressed. So in a school with restorative practices, this suspension still happens. You have to have that suspension, you have to be able to protect the safety of the learning environment. But before they go home, they go to meet with an adult, typically me or a counselor. And they're going to talk, explain the circumstances that led to the fight. And then we try to figure out, you know, why that fight happened. The parents of each student are called. The parents are also filled in on what happened. The parents are then offered a mediation. So when the students return, we're going to do either mediation with the students or with the students and the parents. It's up to the parents discretion. But either way, when they come back...
That would be a mediation between the two students who are fighting?
And their parents.
Okay, so that's what the mediation would involve.
Correct. And so sometimes the parents participate, sometimes they don't. In this particular situation that I'm referencing, the parents did participate. So they came back, the two kids got together, both, both mothers were there. And we talked through the problem, we figured out why they fought, we figured out all the background. And then we make an agreement about how do we go from there. So the important thing is that the underlying cause is addressed. Both parties walk away satisfied. They've had ownership in their resolution. And nine out of 10 times, that causes, that causes situation to stop. So the fights don't occur. I mean, so this is one example, and one thing I didn't talk about in this presentation, but I think it's mentioned here, is also how mediations prevent fights. I've done about 23 mediations since I've been here. And so every single one of those mediations was a situation that was escalated that since I've done the mediation has completely died down. So restorative practices are both used to repair harm that's caused and prevent harm from being caused through this process. Okay. And so then, you know, something a lot more minor. Students just, you got the kid who's always just getting removed from class for, you know, stupid things, talking, acting up, nothing major. So what happens? Typically, they're sent out to the office, see the principal, they get a consequence, detention, lunch detention, whatever. They come back to class the next day. Never really spoken to, just like, hey, don't do it again, you know, you shouldn't do that, you know better. So the kid goes back to class. Whatever's causing them to misbehave has not been addressed. So they come back to class the next day, they could be talking again, throwing a paper, whatever it is, they're repeating that. And so they get removed again. Consequences escalate. Then the student starts to resent the teacher, oh, this guy's always rapping me up, they don't like me. And so that bad blood starts to form. And it just continues. Eventually, the student fails and winds up having to repeat classes and go to summer school. So same situation with restorative practices. Still get the consequence. So it doesn't change getting lunch attention or anything like that. But when the student is called down to the principal, there's a deep conversation as to why. Why those behaviors were going on and how those behaviors damaged the broader learning environment. From there, after the consequence, the principal and the teacher meet with the student. They discuss the issues together. We create a behavior contract for moving forward. This behavior contract is written by the student and the teacher. They're involved in the contract. They get to explain what their struggles are, they get to set their goals, and they get to explain to the teacher and the principal, this is what I need from you to support me. So now they're involved. It also, it has the benefit of building a relationship. The student may feel like, oh, the teacher doesn't care about me. The teacher's taking the time out to sit and talk to him 20, 30 minutes, write this out, agree to a contract. Every time I've done it, the end result is that the, the bond between the student and teacher that was fractured becomes much stronger because they've taken that time to talk it out. And as a result, I've seen behaviors improve considerably with that. So students skip classes. What happens? Same thing, consequences, whatever it is, they continue to skip, consequences become more severe. Skip class, you get ISS or OSS if you keep skipping, which in turn makes you miss more class. So you skip one class, you get ISS, you miss another class, and repeat, repeat. Student fails and of course, they have to either repeat or take summer school. So with restorative practices, same thing, you still get a consequence. You can't have kids wandering around the hallway all day. But we try to figure out why they're skipping classes. We look for patterns. Why, what class is skipping? Is there a time of day they're skipping? Is there an issue with a classmate? So we try to find those things and address those underlying causes. And, you know, usually there's a couple of kids that are kind of known as the skippers, you know? And so we hold restorative circles and we've been doing that. Getting the kids together and form like a support group to try to address... Getting the kids together and form like a support group to try to address the behaviors and, you know, figure out strategies, how we go to class, what's preventing us from going to class, why is class important, and all those things, and to, you know, set them up on a path to success. So, how does this all work in practice? Those are some examples of things that I've been doing since restorative practices. So, I just wanted to kinda pull up the monthly referral data. So, this is just kinda comparing last year to this year. So, in September of last year, there were fifty-four referrals. In September of this year, there were fifty-nine referrals. That's a nine-point-three percent increase. Not really concerning. There was a new principal in the beginning of the year, and then there was a new principal at the end of September as well. So, kids are gonna test that both times. So, I think that's kinda normal. So, once the stability happened, October, so I started using restorative practices right off the bat. We had a hundred and four referrals last year, and then ninety referrals this October. So, we went down thirteen-and-a-half percent referrals. So, November. So, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, total was seventy, and two thousand nineteen, twenty, total is eighty, which means there was a fourteen-point-three percent increase in referrals. So, what happened? Positive referrals happened. So, total referrals indicate this as well. So, positive referrals are a new thing we're doing. It's just like a discipline referral in terms of how a teacher has to do it, only it's created for students who exhibit positive behaviors. You know, trying hard, helping out, random acts of kindness, effort. So, they're really given for a variety of things. Just like a discipline referral, students are called down to me, and then, it's pretty nice. I mean, students come down, and typically, they're pretty nervous, 'cause, you know, like, "Well, what did I do?" You know, and they come in the office, and then I explain what a positive referral is, if it's their first one. I hand them a letter, they get to go home, and I praise them for doing the right thing. To encourage both, A, that the teacher wrote them up, that they noticed how good they've been doing, and that I'm also enforcing, like, what a boon they are in our community, to have students like that in our community. And that's what we want. We wanna create good behaviors. And this is really the positive school climate. When I call most kids down for a positive referral, you know, they kinda come a little nervous. And it's always that moment, like, first they're very confused. I'm like, "Hey, you know what a positive referral is?" And they're just kinda like guessing. But as I go through it, watching their face light up, watching students fill with pride, you know, it's just really, really nice to have that positive reinforcement, see the kids take pride in their accomplishments. And we're gonna be using these things for a variety of different things, which I've got some feedback from teachers. I got some feedback from students. My principal's cabinet giving me some good ideas of how we're gonna continue to push them. So, I kinda wanna now, before I, you know, I said that we had seventy referrals and then eighty referrals, right? So, I wanna break it down now. Last year, we had seventy discipline referrals. This year, we had thirty-seven discipline referrals. So, that means that our referrals went down by forty-seven-point-one percent from November. But this is really what's more important to me. Our positive referrals were forty-three. So, to me, okay, you go back there. Like, these two numbers add up to eighty. But, what means a lot to me is that if you think about how this plays out in practice, eighty times in November, I got a referral and called a student down to my office. So, eighty different students had to come to my office in November, but more than half of those times, it was to be told something positive. More than half of those times, it was filled, "Hey, you're doing a great job, keep it up, you're a role model to the school." And so, to me, that's just so positive for both the kids, for me. It's just for the entire environment to know that students are getting called to me more for doing the right thing than doing the wrong thing. So, it just represents a completely new shift in our culture. So, I wanna, you know... So, I wanna look at some individual behaviors. So, I just kinda took the top behaviors. So, two thousand eighteen, nineteen versus now. So, Mr. Skip class, this is just for November, went from twenty-four to eleven, so that's a major behavior. More than a fifty-four-point-two percent decrease. You know, classroom disruptions, just kinda general noncompliance, insubordination, stuff like that. Went from twenty-one to thirteen, so thirty-eight-point-one percent decrease. Profane and vulgar language from six to two, you know, two-thirds decrease. And then, cell phone abuse wasn't too major, but it was just something I thought I'd mention, 'cause, you know... So, we've seen decreases across the board for all our major categories, as well as a total decrease. But the thing that I'm most proud of is the next one. 'Cause I think this really tells the story of restorative justice, which is this. So, we have, you know, I couldn't say their names for confidentiality reasons, but these are all real students. And so, I took that data from two different time periods. So, it's September twenty-third, which was my start date, to the end of October. So, it's about a month and a week. And then, from November first to now, which is also about a month and a week. So, pretty close to the same time period. So, I just wanna look at their referrals from the first month and change that I was here and how that individual has changed. So, student A, really pretty similar, not a huge deal. Student B had eleven referrals when I saw him. He was getting written up every other day. Now, he had two since November first. Student C, eight referrals, down to one. Eight referrals, down to two. Student E, six referrals, then zero as of November first. Four to two. And then, student G, five referrals, down to zero. H, five referrals, down to one. So, this to me is very powerful. This shows the impact on the individual kids. Individual kids are getting written up every day. Individual kids are getting in trouble every day. And to see that now they're not getting in trouble, that they're doing the right thing, is just mind-boggling. You know, it's just, it's an amazing thing. And I've actually showed a few kids this chart, and said, "Hey, you find yourself on this chart." You know? I said, "Look," and I've had someone in my office say that she got a positive referral, which is why she was in my office. And so, I said, you know, "You're student E." And I showed her, and it was just such, and then I called a parent, and I told the parent about this chart. You know, so it's just such a clear indication of how these relationships and figuring out what's going on in these kids' lives and helping them on that level will help curb behaviors, while also not shirking on the important matter of traditional discipline. So, any questions?
I have one. When you have the kids in, are the kids buying into your circles? You said you've had some restorative circles. How are they reacting to that, and when are you doing those circles?
So, there's two different types. So, one, I've went to a classroom and did a circle with an entire class. And the other is kind of a little group that I do with social work and guidance counselor and a few of the kids. And honestly, it's, I've done a lot of circles in my time, disconnected and everything, and it's always the same. The beginning's a little awkward, everyone's like, "This is stupid." They're like trying to be too cool for it. And then, as it goes on, more and more people participate. What happens is you have a little talking piece, right? And you pass it around. So, the first time you pass it around, you have maybe three kids talk. And then, as you pass it around, each time it goes around, more and more kids talk. And so, and they begin to open up, and you know what? They like it because it gives them a voice. And part of the rules are, we want you to speak, and you can say anything. You know, your voice is important. We want you to be heard, and we're here to listen to you. And we're here to really, you know, understand whatever's going on, and we wanna help you with it. So, we're partners in this. So, kids wanna be heard. So, as much as they might wanna be like, "Oh, this is stupid at first," they always open up. And I think one of the greatest things is, the most unlikely students are the ones who love it. One of the students who you think is like such like, kinda like, when he is in trouble, he just kinda sits there, doesn't talk. And he was in a circle with me yesterday. He was literally glowing and just leading the circle, and he was like super into it. Because they do wanna be heard, and everyone wants to be heard. And this gives them an opportunity to be heard in a non-judgy way and to not be spoken over and to know that their opinion is valued. So, they always take it seriously. It just takes, sometimes a little time for the butterflies to, you know...
And when do you do this?
So, if a teacher requests that I go in, then I'll go into the room and assist the teacher in doing a circle. Other than that, I do them during like study hall. A bunch of, a certain group of kids has like six periods of study hall, so I'll pull them out of the study hall and we'll do it in my office. So, you know, we'll do a full class if it's warranted, or we'll do a small group, you know, depending on the situation and the reason. 'Cause there's a lot of different reasons why you wanna do a circle.
Sure, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, we've had conscious, restorative practices in elementary school for four years. In the middle school, for the last couple of years, we've been introducing it. This is a new thing for the high school. When we began talking about it, there was a lot of awareness on the part of the staff in the high school, and I was wondering what is the feedback that you've been getting from the staff since you've been apparently doing quite a bit of this?
Well, you know, I think that they, when people see, so I haven't actually addressed that I'm doing this stuff with them yet. I'm just showing them the discipline referrals and the data, but they've been, so it's, what I like to do is do it. And so, the kid, the whole school sees that there's follow-through on discipline. They see that the numbers are down. They see that their, you know, their behaviors are manageable. And throughout all this, they've been participating. In, you know, these, like, I've had tons of issues where I've had a student and a teacher sitting, talking at. We've done these behavior contracts, we've done reflection pieces that have been... So, we've been doing all of it, but I haven't called it restorative practice yet. For that reason, I wanted to make, I wanted, I know it works, but I wanted to be able to prove it works. So, now, when I introduce it to the staff as restorative practices, we're not doing anything different. I'm just naming what's already been done. And then, we can start the training and how I could assist everyone in doing these kinds of things to help across the board. So, I don't anticipate any pushback because they see that it works, and they see that it's, oh, well, I'm still doing discipline, but this added component to it will help.
So, I have a comment first and then a few questions. So, first, thank you for doing this upfront. Conscious discipline, this whole difference between not having discipline and having restorative practices was a thorn in the beginning of conscious discipline, and there was a lot of confusion over that. So, I think setting this tone at the beginning will do wonders on having the right track from the beginning. My questions, how and who will train, and who will get trained? What, how will we handle teachers slash counselors that don't come along with developing the skills necessary to actually be an applier themselves? And how will we develop a self-sustaining model for this?
So, how and, you know, how will get trained? We start out through staff meetings and through conversations. So, training is, you know, you have the kind of formal staff meetings, where we talk about this stuff. Part of the summer institute that we're talking about is a restorative practice session, so we'll have a workshop on it over the summer. And also, little conversations, you know, we, I'll just skip to the third question about people who aren't coming along. I think that, you know, one of the things, whatever, there's a new thing. If you show people that it works and it makes their life easier, then they'll want to do it. So, you know, just without naming names, I had a teacher who definitely is a little old-school, and he was really, really struggling with a few, with two particular students. And it was, it was giving him agitif, for lack of a better word. And then, you know, the students were unhappy, he was unhappy. And so, we got together and we had a long mediation, we wrote some behavior contracts. So, now it's been five weeks, and the kids have not gotten a referral in that teacher's class yet. He reports to me that they're so much better. They come in, they do their work, they're more focused, they have a better relationship with him, they're back to like laughing and joking with him. So, I think when you show that, and you say, "Well, look, it's worked for you." You know it's worked. So, you know, I think that's how you break down the barriers.
I didn't, by that question, I didn't mean beliefs from getting on board, but a skill to apply it themselves. Or is, you know, if somebody doesn't feel comfortable as a teacher or counselor being able to execute that themselves, are you the resource? What's kinda the model that you're looking to deploy?
So, definitely, I'm a big resource, as are both my counselors. Ms. Rose and Ms. Hodge, they do the circles with me. And so, they're new to it, but they're very open to it, and I'm showing them, you know, how it works. And so, they've done, like I said, I did twenty-three mediations, but Ms. Rose has done a few mediations, Ms. Hodge has done a few mediations. So, we're doing these things. And so, I'll be passing the skillset on to them, who then also, and then we'll have a support team of people to help teachers who are struggling. And, you know, it's one of those things that you're constantly learning. You're never like a master. I'm not a master of everything, you know? There's certain things that I know, and I'm always willing to try new things. And so, you know, the nice thing about restorative practice is it's easy to do together. You have to do a behavior contract with a kid, you sit down together. So, there's always a resource to help you through if you've tried something and maybe it didn't work as well as you wanted it to work. And, you know, it takes time, and I think a key to rolling it out is to start small, start with little things you could do in the classroom, and then kinda build up from there. So, I don't expect everyone to be a master of it overnight, but I think over time, with me and the counselors around, and as more and more teachers buy into it, more and more teachers will be a resource for it.
So, I'm hearing that you think we can do this ourselves, without them?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, so that's the thing, there's nothing special without me. You know, all I do is when you use restorative practices, it really has... Everyone's one thing we all agree on. Yeah, when you use restorative practices, it's, you know, it's about listening, figuring out what's going on with the kid, and then helping them through their issues. And that's something that everyone could do. And, you know, even like, well, soon as you come back from break, Ms. Rose and I have a schedule, we're gonna be sitting down with teachers and students who are failing, and we're gonna be talking to them. And that's, you know, hidden training for restorative practice, so to speak. They're seeing it in action, and together, we're setting goals, figuring out obstacles, and that's what restorative practices are all about. So, anyone can do it once the stigma of it is removed.
Thank you.
Okay, what else? I just wanna say, as a strong proponent of restorative practices, I'm very excited, especially to see the statistics that show the effect, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and so, the next part, just to kinda go over Regent's test scores, obviously, this is all from last year. And really, I kinda wanna point this out to give props to all my teachers. So, I kinda wanna go down our report card and, you know, to show our scores, and you could just hover over each blue and yellow bar, just to show. So, in ELA, no, just from the...
Yeah, just there?
Yeah. So, you know, in ELA, we're at ninety-three percent proficient versus the state average, which is eighty-four percent. So, we're well above that in ELA. And you can just scroll down. And I just kinda wanna really use this. Now, in Algebra, we're at seventy percent versus the state is seventy-one percent. So, we're a little low in Algebra, and this is also good for me to know. As a new person coming in, to know, you know, we're not bad, but this is an area that I really wanna focus on to help us improve. And I have a few, you know, solutions in mind to work with in math department. And so, same thing with geometry. We're definitely, we're a little lower in geometry. And in Algebra II, you know, a little low, but just about at the state standards. So, knowing that stuff is good for a new principal to come in and see that, knowing kinda what we have to work on. In Global, I mean, this is phenomenal, a hundred percent proficient, which is, you know, unheard of versus the state average, seventy-nine percent, which just really speaks living environment, ninety-one percent versus seventy-three. And so, you know, you see these numbers, and you just know, A, you know, physical science, eighty-seven percent to sixty-nine. You just see the quality of the teachers we have at Kenjo, of our students. Chemistry, eighty-nine percent to seventy-three. And then, physical, physics, I mean, ninety percent to eighty-two percent. One more. And then, global, eighty-three percent to sixty-two percent. And... Yes, I thought that was, sorry. Ninety-one percent, history and government, US history and government, to seventy-seven percent. So, I just kinda wanted to run through our old Regent's scores. You know, Kenjo High is ahead of the curve in just about every area, you know, which speaks to our students and our staff, how dedicated they are, how hardworking they are. And it's also good to see an area where maybe we're not as strong in, it's something we need to focus on. So, I just kinda wanted to show that as the ending to this. Any questions on the data?
I have one. I again applaud the, you know, the results, but there's one thing that I've noticed, looking through them, that was, with the exception of ELA, where there was basic equality, in almost every other area, there was a wide discrepancy between the economically disadvantaged and the non-economically disadvantaged students. And if you look at, for instance, Algebra I, economically disadvantaged is fifty-nine percent versus eighty... And if you look at, for instance, Algebra I, economically disadvantaged is 59% versus 80% for none. Again, Geometry, 42% versus 68%. And then Algebra II, 70% versus 84%. In ELA, they were virtually like 93, 92, they were virtually equal. And as you go down in each of them, the spread was not that significant, that severe, but 10, 12, 14 points. And it's something that we as a district have really looked at over the years is, you know, as there's an increasing amount of poverty in our area and students who come from poverty. And it's something that in addition to addressing the problem overall, that's an additional thing I think that, you know, we've looked at that really needs to be addressed. And I just wanted to share that with you as, you know, as part of hopefully the solution to some of the shortcomings.
Yeah, and I completely agree. And so when, when you have a shift in poverty, there needs to be a shift in teaching as well. And, you know, so one of the things that I want to focus on, this is maybe more long-term, is culturally responsive teaching. And, you know, what's going on, it is different teaching kids who are economically disadvantaged and you have to shift your teaching to meet their needs. And a lot of that has to do with, you know, different forms of engagement that we'll be talking about in the staff. But it, it's something that I have a lot of experience with coming from Schenectady, teaching Queens, I'm all about it. And so that, that's, that's kind of on my radar for the future.
The other thing that I noticed from the overall scores is it kind of reinforces the discussion we had in the Education Committee about math mapping courses and things that it really does look like we need to address how our math mapping will be better off.
Right.
So I think not, not only, you know, maybe we can do better in the actual testing aspect, but it kind of reinforces what we started talking about that we probably do need to spend some time on that.
Yeah, and, and I in the math department also agree.
And that's even further down.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is a discussion of how to district tuition and policy, but we already did that in the Policy Committee, so we can skip over that. So Sunday athletic practices, take it away Dr. Nick.
Just had a question and just probably more history and just discussion. I know there's some situations where athletic events take place on a Monday and for the students not to be able to prepare on a Sunday, for example, could be a little detrimental to the team. And being a former coach and athletic director, I think maybe important to kind of look at the opportunity from maybe 12 to 6 o'clock on a Sunday, for example, for a practice to occur. Because I think it's important for people to still be with their families, get to 10 morning events with their family and also at night for dinner, I think, Sunday. But usually if you play a Friday night contest and you have a Monday night contest, you usually want to try to get that practice in the day before. So I think there's been, and I'm a little, I think there's no policy written, but I think it was talked about.
Just, just for everyone's information, a number of years ago, and I don't remember exactly when, we had a discussion about this question and made a decision as a board that we would prohibit practices or games to be held on Sundays, to give families a day to have when, you know, they can all be together. And, you know, I, I don't think anyone here was here at that time, but that is, I, I don't know that it was ever written anywhere or it was something we certainly all agree upon.
Well, I can tell you that coaches don't follow for Sunday activities. They had seven on sevens on Sundays, some of my kids wanted to just.
But that, you know, again, it may not be written anywhere, but it was very clearly stated by board that we wanted that not to occur. So what Dr. Fitzgerald was asking is that we made an exception when there are games on Monday, that there should be allowed to be practices on Sunday, not games on Sunday, practices.
Now, some Sundays might happen later on in the season when there's been bad snow, winter. You know, Section Two might decide and say, okay, you got to transfer games in two days. That, that has happened and probably always will, depending on the weather situation. But especially in Sectional, not necessarily games or not games. But I would just like to entertain an opportunity for the students to practice on a Sunday only if they have a Monday contest.
So the floor is open for discussion.
I approve, don't know if that should be a policy, but that's why I'm asking.
Well, I mean, it's something that we had decided on a number of years ago, so I think.
Do we have a policy?
What?
Or is it just a discussion that was had? That's my question.
Well, I mean, we had, we had a vote on it. I don't know that, other than going in the minutes, I don't know whether it's ever entered our policy management, but I think it was.
I think it's a policy, yeah, so.
So the floor is open for discussion if people want to say anything, that was.
I, I understand where you're coming from in terms of a Friday contest and then a Monday contest. I understand that, but in terms of it, and maybe it just needs to be at the discretion of the coach and the team for that rather than policy. I think probably from a philosophical standpoint, I mean, we think about these kids and how they're involved in so many different things and they do need that break and families because of those Friday night contests, Monday night contests, Tuesday concert, Wednesday fundraiser, Thursday this or whatever, they need that downtime, which we're missing. So, but I mean, I completely understand where if you have a Friday contest and a Monday contest, you know, if the, you know, if you, I don't think it should be a policy.
I know the New York State Public Athletic Association says you can't practice seven days in a row, play seven days in a row.
Right.
So there's got to be a break in there sometime. I just know as a coach and a former, you know, student player, I mean, a student athlete, that day before the game was so important to get that practice in. And again, if it's a Tuesday, it's a different story. If you practice Saturday and a Monday, you'd have done, you know, have your Sundays off. So I'm just saying, I think a 12 to 6 o'clock window period, no more than two hours on a Sunday, gives that opportunity for that to happen if it's only a Monday contest. I know we want to constantly try to improve our extracurriculars and athletic programs. I think these are some of the ways we can do it without too much harm, I guess, is what I suppose.
I think we need to observe people's beliefs and it shouldn't be long against them. If we have somebody that gets Sabbath on Saturday and coaches want to practice on Saturday and they don't want to practice, then that's great. And that's what my children have decided on Sundays.
So then you, you're saying that you would object to what Dr. Fitzgerald was proposing, that students should not be penalized for not anticipating, but it's.
Then I would suggest not doing it because I wouldn't want to put the kid and the team in that position. Well, I think you have the same situation today, though, with Saturday practices. It just so happens that we don't have a large population that's Jewish. But I would, I would say the same thing in that regard.
I would be careful precluding kids if they, if they didn't show up and the opportunity for, you know, a coach to get ready for a game on Monday, missing two kids would be fair enough, I think, to the, to the rest of the team and that kid. And it's not anything wrong with the parents or what they believe in, I just wouldn't want to put the team in that position, so.
I think that's the coach's decision. I know with, with our family, all the coaches have known what the kids felt and the coaches made their decisions what days they held things. And it was hell on certain days, my kids weren't there.
Any other thoughts on this question?
I see what you're saying, Scott, and I agree with it, but I think it just, what happens is that somebody's going to say your kid was penalized for not being there, even if it wasn't really the reason they were penalized. And it's, it makes it tougher for the coach, so that is a tough thing to make sure that it's adhered to. And so is the coach, at the end, it's the coach's discretion who plays based on body of work.
It's always their discretion, but I don't think you can decree.
I agree.
Our, our team over somebody else's values.
I, I agree 100%. No, I agree with that.
And I would say that no matter what their values are. But the coach ultimately has to decide. If they decide that, you know, like, like I said, some years, coaches decided seven on seven was Sundays and my kids weren't there. Coach needs to decide on what he, what they do with the kid. You know, and other times they held it on other days because they wanted my kid there. So I think that's a coach decision at that point.
Yeah, that's a long idea.
Give the kids the opportunity to practice on that day. I don't want to open the floor too much because I know there's a kitchen over there to say something, I think. I don't want to. Okay, so where do we think we would want to go with some of these?
I, I think, I think really what it comes down to then, from what I'm hearing, is that you would discourage events from happening on Sunday, either practices and certainly games.
Yep.
And that, but it is up to the coach's discretion, but our clear feeling is that in most cases, as much as possible, Sundays should not be a day.
And I think ultimately it's, you know, it's a coach's decision on how they run their team, you know? You know, they make a decision whether a player going to a college visit means they didn't practice or not. You know, and it would, it would come down to the same thing and the child would have to make a decision.
Yep. So I think the opportunity I would like to give, like I said, is the Mondays and the Sundays, 12 to 6, I'd like to give them. That's at least a, you know, in a small window period, I hate to have it all over the place.
Okay. Are we, are we comfortable with that, everyone?
Thank you.
Moving right along, we have distance learning. Take it away, Dr. Nick.
Just looking into some options for extra coursework for our students. I know we had a scheduling meeting not too long ago about opportunities, more opportunities for elective courses for students. And besides Northville, who, when I met with the distance learning from NAREC, Northville looks like they're going to go with it next year. We're the last district left not having the, the option for it. And I think this is a good opportunity to, to give the students more elective courses. And I always say, cut down on some study halls and give the kids a different experience. My last district, it was going to pass the city kids from Caro Durham to Burn Hills, total different demographic and worlds, meet together and have a class together and then actually meet up a couple of times. Like they're good friends. It was great to see not only they had a great course, but opportunities for that. This has grown to almost 700 courses across the state now that we can look into and an opportunity for our students again, to get an opportunity to look at different courses. I sent the last couple of weeks some purchases and budgets that NAREC put together for me if we wanted to pursue this. There is an upfront cost for the equipment, but there's some different options than looking at those costs. For example, the upfront cost is about $60,000 to $65,000, which is fully aidable. So you'd get that money back the following year. There's options of looking at that $60,000 to $65,000 over three years, so it doesn't hit you as much in the budget category. And then there's an option of looking for grant monies that are out there, which is on the next thing we will be talking about that sent to this weekly update, about looking at possibility for the Capital Region Voces to help us write some grants. And one of those, it's kind of ironic, when I met with her, she emailed me two days later after I met with the head of the Grant Department of Capital Region Voces, and she said there's a grant out there right now for $60,000 for distance learning equipment. There are about 70%, 60 to 70% in the rural school area right now obtaining the grants for a bit. And I'd have to check in on this, but I think it's a private org, a private grant that will allow us to get the money and then get aid on the money as well in terms of purchasing equipment. So I guess there's a couple of different scenarios we can look at to move forward. After that first year hit in terms of the cost, if you offer an average of two classes a year, you break out about even because you get the money back. For, for example, if a teacher's teaching the course, you get 20% of their salary back. If there's a teacher in there as a duty, just to making sure the kids are being observed while the other teacher's teaching it, you get 20% of their salary back as well. So if we offered at least two courses, Mike from NAREC drew it up and you can kind of see the bottom dollar there. It would break out about even after the first year. I seriously think we could probably offer two or three courses. It's, it's, it's kind of tough to go too, too big, too fast. I would want to grow it to two or three courses and then build it from there. And there's also some option for middle school as well. We're starting that up, a couple of different electives. So I think it's definitely something we should approach and look into. And again, we're kind of the only district left. And the fact that we do have a lot of study halls and we're trying to kind of max that out, this is a good opportunity for us to do it, so. So I guess it's kind of open to, do we want to add?
A, a question.
Sure.
Where would you house it to, like a spot in mind?
It'd be a portable unit, so we'd be able to move it from.
So you wouldn't have a distance learning room?
Yeah, we could eventually, but I think the best bet for us at this point, unless, unless we want to go that direction, we can look at both.
Do we have an empty room?
Empty room at this point, we can probably make it happen, but.
215.
215. So, but we can also use, I like the concept.
I was just thinking, if you ask the equipment, you know, in terms of keeping it.
Have a chance to get it.
Right, if you, if you have it in one spot and the teacher, then you, then you open it up where you have, you know, eight teachers that can do it and they're just going in there all the time.
Well, I guess we'd look at, you know, if we decided to go forward with this and that Mike come back up from there, he would map out and absolutely say what man came and figure out what would be the best possibilities for us, you know? Especially if we, you know, if we wanted to offer different classes or in the primary, we could, we can.
How do their tuition charges cost?
It's built into the cost, so there's one set cost.
No matter how many students we put into it?
Correct.
That, that's what I was trying to.
So for example, if you teach the course, so say Zevens teaches the course and we have no students here.
Right.
We would stick at 20% of your salary.
Right, what if we have students here in the class, do we pay anything?
We would, there's always a set fee period, so no matter how many courses we run or how many kids we have.
It's always going to be the same bill.
Correct.
Okay. I'm surprised that none of the works, but okay.
I'll tell you what, it's an amazing revenue source. We were pulling in about $165,000 annually last year to run two rooms.
Oh, yeah, I can see it on our end from a revenue source. I'm just surprised they can pay the bills with just a flat rate.
I'm waiting for the bubble to burst on that too, as it's getting so large right now. But I think this is a great way to put in some of those electives that we kind of are missing or we just can't give them.
Is there money from our grant, our technology grant for this? Was that a put in there to, I thought, because I remember we chatted about it.
In, in the original scale of the first SSIP, it's not, I'd have to look, there's certain things that are and aren't eligible and fall into the different smart schools plans. I'd have to look to see specifically if that is. The only thing that we have, even if, if we did a revision for an SSIP III right now, because the second one we have done around school security, timeframe wise, it would go to state for initial approval, back to us for revision and things like that. It could be for 18 months, depending on if it's eligible. And I don't know off the top of my head. I know it's network, it wouldn't be eratable, which is another category where we can buy certain things as relates to technology, but that's more infrastructure for the network and the things associated with that, like a, an AP wireless router or certain parts of the actual network infrastructure, so it wouldn't be eligible for purchase under that.
But somehow E-rate paid plays into this because that's only the cost structure. But somehow E-rate paid plays into this because that's only the cost structure.
Because the things associated with the network bandwidth to make that happen, those things would be eligible.
So would we need higher bandwidth, is that what we need?
Right now, we're not, right now, we are at what we need. Um, but the next step in E-rate for that fund as it relates to bandwidth is to increase the size of our bandwidth. Um, because ultimately what they want is districts to start approaching one gig as opposed to a hundred nine bytes per second. So we are at, we are at the minimum threshold. So we will very easily be able to be E-rate eligible to continue to increase that threshold to where we want it to be.
So first, uh, I think this is an excellent idea. Um, talked about it for a couple of years. I, I think it's something that we should do and I think this is the way we can offer, you know, the engineering course to somebody that we don't have to have ten students enroll in an engineering class. We offer it to the person that wants to do engineering and, you know, it, it allows all kinds of flexibility for offering people to pursue their passions, right? That, that are not realistic for us to do on a class-based model with a teacher in the classroom. So I think it's a fabulous thing to do. In terms of budget, if we don't get a grant, I think it would be wiser for us to break it over as many years as we could. Because then really the first years really are out late and the rest will reverse the cover.
And if we get three or four classes, we might find out that we...
Right.
Besides the first year, Washington.
You're right, exactly.
And I think we could probably use a three or four classes, to tell you the truth, they're very creative. I wouldn't go much more than that, kind of fine line. It's come down to duties and coverage too is another piece we have to look at, so. It, I guess it kind of piggybacks off to the next piece, which is the grant writing. Um, you know, there's a lot of grants out there. When I met, when I met with the lady from, uh, Capital Region BOCES.
Just to, just to stop you before we get into grants. Um, I just want to know, are there any other thoughts or concepts on the concept of us getting into the distance learning? Are we basically saying that we are endorsing that approach and we'd like to see it developed?
I think it's great.
So I just want to, I mean, I think we should establish that.
No, I agree. I agree.
Okay, now you may go.
So I think it's good.
So the next piece is, you know, there's so much, there's so many resources and money out there. And, uh, Capital Region BOCES has twelve grant writers and they're exclusive now. They're going through HFMBOCES, Recurricu BOCES. They're pretty much the hub of grant writing right now. And, uh, I know Doug Burke is going to be here tonight, but he's used them for years over the fourth plane. He was able to bring, you know, the benefits immensely, especially in a smaller rural district. There seems to be a lot more of those opportunities because we fit the mold for what the grant mold is right now. So, um, there's different avenues for us to look at in terms of what we want to do in terms of using their services. And, uh, when I met with, uh, the head of the grant department, um, you know, she suggested to kind of look at the hundred and fifty hours, which is the fifteen thousand dollar mark, which is again, is aidable, um, a little prorated for the rest of the year as well. Um, and a hundred and fifty hours would give you a very large grant and about two or three smaller grants. That's how she explained it. So I think for our purposes, for the next six months, I think I could go back to her and say, I want us to go right after that grant for the, for the, uh, for the distance learning and then feel our way through and see how this really works. Um, I think it would be prorated off of that amount, which again, would be aidable for next year. But it could be something we'd have to, you know, lay the cost out for, so. So some things to decide as we move forward here. Now, obviously in a perfect world, if we're able to get the grant for the, uh, distance learning equipment, which is actually sixty thousand dollars, which is interesting, um, we then would be looking at the aidability on the sixty thousand and then we would be furning fifteen or twelve, probably twelve now and getting what? Eight thousand of that back next year? So it's probably worth giving it a shot, but with grants, you may not get it either. I think that's the best way to go. Because we have some decisions to make.
Questions or comments?
We, we for our votes to be just like, just so there's no technical issues.
That's right, we should have sworn in with it.
Right, just for, for, I just don't want there to be anybody.
No, no, absolutely, that, that would be a big oversight, sorry.
Are you a part of our group and we need to make sure?
Do we have, uh, swear again?
So what do people feel about the grants?
Boy, what an oversight, my goodness.
It's official member.
We're already halfway through the year. So, um, having written grants, a hundred and fifty hours is a lot of time.
Do they prorate?
To start with.
I think we can go with a more prorated about time to see some of the other avenues we can go hourly.
Yeah, their, their rate is... So I mean, a hundred hours is gonna give you the same rate as a hundred and fifty hours, twenty-five hourly.
I mean, I could reach out and ask her what's it take if you can do it that way. You know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly.
Like coming back and saying, mostly it's grant departments, that's exactly what I was looking for.
Exactly, exactly. That's the advantage of doing a grant writing service. Is they know exactly based on what type of grant it is, what they're looking for as evidence, what you need to show from your practices in your school and the data that you need to pull from your school to be deemed as a good qualified recipient. That's, that's what you get for that money. Um, so I think we're in a good situation right now. One, I think, you know, I hate to say this, but obviously they want us to business that wants to be a part of this and now they found this grant that they feel really comfortable with. When I talked to her, it's just a really, I really would like some money for some, you know, distance learning about three or four days later, someone emailed me and said, I just want to let you know it was a grant there for sixty thousand dollars. I think we could feature it, we could do a little district hour, it's perfect. And, uh, so we might be able to... What I would love is if we could get them to prorate their hundred and fifty hour rate for seventy-five hours, which would give us half a year to use seventy-five hours. And I think that would get us the big grant. And then we'd get a reimbursement on that and that would allow us to fund it ourselves next year from the reimbursement. You know, I would try to negotiate something like that if it were me. Because writing a grant for something like this is gonna be a good week's work with somebody doing it. So you need, it, it's far more than this sixteen hours, but it's not a hundred and fifty.
Correct. So I will reach out to her and ask what she feels it would take to do this grant. And then I'll start to ask what it was.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
From a, yeah, and from a price per hour, it's far better if we could get her to prorate the hour block. You know, say, look, we're halfway through the year, we want to do business with you, let's strike a deal. So I'll come back with January.
Okay, can I make a suggestion that, you know, so that we can move things along and hopefully, you know, get this all rolling? How about if we, when we, we, this is on approvals. How about if we authorize spending up to seventy-five hundred dollars, whichever way you can get it. Either on a per hour basis or look prorated for, as half the fifteen thousand.
Yeah, and, and it won't take the full amount, obviously. I won't refer to it as the full amount.
Yeah, well, like we're saying, well, we, we could go for the hourly rate.
That's what I mean, yeah.
You know, up to seventy-five hundred dollars.
I got you.
Is what, is that an agreeable way to go on that?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what we'll make the, when we get to the approvals, that's what we'll put on for approval. Does that agree?
If we have a pretty good feel, you know, we should get this grant.
Well, that's the thing, it'll give you a good test run and then you'll know, okay, how much should we invest next year?
We'll actually fund it.
Right. And also if you... Exactly. And if you become a member, you'll also get these emails, so you'll get an idea of how many grants are they really able to connect us with.
Right.
I, I know we do a lot of grant writing at the college and we do a ton of database searching ourselves to find what ones really apply. So I think you really want to kind of feel that aspect out a little bit to see what kind of feeder are they giving us? Or are we gonna have to do our own finding work anyway?
Right.
Sounds good.
Just to chime in real quick, we use the Service at Glover's Hill and they would literally come with a, a, a profile that fit your district with all the grants they thought were gonna fit. And then you would choose through them, the ones that targeted the areas where the district was looking to invest money. And then they milked off of that, that, that's already part of the service. And there was, not to sound silly, but there were problems spending some of the money they were getting because it's, some of them are so targeted, it was a good problem to have.
Yeah, exactly.
We could double our salary. Which I believe is the best. Okay, anything else on the, um, on the grants? Okay, um, so, um, why don't we go through presentation topics and then before we get to approvals, we will see if we can't slurry into the board as an official. Okay, so, um, the, uh, last meeting, there was a, a brief list of, um, suggested presentation topics.
We can have that.
And, you know, I was wondering if there are any additions to that list. Um, just going over the list, I, I thought I was here, but I don't see it. Um, oh, it's in the minutes, that's where it was, okay. So let's go to the minutes from last meeting, November fourteenth meeting. And, and if you see where, where it says few minutes, you just click on that. And then you go down to find the, if I can get my computer moving. Okay, so, um, so one of the things I just wanted to add, that collaborative teaching is, um, collaborative, it's teaching collaborative practices to the students, along with critical thinking and oral, oral speaking skills. That's what that, it's not that you want the teacher to collaborate, you want the students to learn how to work collaboratively.
So I would add one more to this that we've already discussed and that's how do we raise our athletics to the level of holistic education that we desire?
As a moment, the...
We talked about that.
Yeah.
We talked about that. What's it gonna take? And, I mean, if we're serious about holistic education, what's it gonna take for us to be that from the athletic perspective?
Okay, any other suggestions? Okay, well, what we're looking at is the, we have five more months, January through May, where we'll have two meetings. These obviously will be second meeting. Um, you know, items, because that's when we have our, uh, those types of discussions. So what we really need to do, if there are no other suggestions, is to pick, um, five or at least the, the first couple so that we can, um, you know, give enough lead time for people to prepare, like, um, that presentation. So does anyone have any suggestion for what they'd like to see? Let's just at least say January, February and then we can think about it and then decide to explain it later.
In looking at these, I think if we're thinking about our academic calendar, curriculum calendar should be earlier rather than later. Right?
I tried to look some of that stuff up and we said it was...
Yeah, we talked about it, it was in a board, um...
Notes, present notes.
Well, no, it was actually in a board presentation, they showed it up there.
Who did, who did the...
Uh, I think Debbie walked through it. It was very rough, um, and an outline, do you remember that?
Fake.
Okay.
I'm trying to remember when.
It was kind of like a spreadsheet with, it was kind of like a spreadsheet with kind of months and just, it was a very basic outline.
Could you just further, to that benefit, talk about what was the curriculum calendar?
Yeah, so this goes back to a conversation we probably had eighteen months ago about the board having to approve curriculum changes somewhere along the process and that we didn't really have that process as a board yet. And we asked, could you help us develop what that should look like? And it was a very rough draft that was presented. Um, and we never kind of picked that back up to refine it and formalize it to actually bring it to fruition.
So for example, what do you use? January sixth, all new course requests.
Exactly.
Proposal form, here's a proposal form, some of them are...
And then department chairs approve them in this period of timeframe, building leaders approve them in this period of timeframe. They're bound to be pulled by this period.
Okay, and then this, that will be on schedule.
Exactly.
That type of...
Correct, okay. And where it came out of was somewhere, I, I don't remember whether it was one of our trainings, but somewhere it was the board supposed to be involved in that process and actually approving curriculum changes.
You were supposed to approve all new courses.
Yeah, and we've never done it.
Gotcha. And very few boards did.
And we never had a process, so that's what that was all about.
So a timeline and process for the most part.
Yeah, okay.
Now, we've already put some of it in place, which is nice, but it'll be nice to formalize it, so.
Good. I would like to suggest to people who agree that we have student community engagement.
Yes.
Um, and what I would like to see with that is, um, just kind of, uh, bringing information from other areas and other districts and how their community engagement works in terms of, I mean, I know some schools have what, you know, more significant community engagement, um, requirements for graduation. I know there's a whole lot of different types of community engagement opportunities.
Community service.
You mean, community service for students?
Yes, yes.
Community service for students.
Um, and, you know, so I think it would be interesting to, you know, kind of get the benefit of what other districts are doing and how successful and positive they've been in terms of exposing kids to the world beyond their walls of the school or their families. Um, and hopefully also providing some benefit to the communities.
I, I'd like to propose that we also put something in there for maybe March or April for the extracurricular activities and things like that, things that are gonna be coming in the budget season. And then we'll have a good idea as to what extracurricular activities, you know, some kind of rundown of what... Okay, so, so what we have, what we offer currently, what our expenditures are for it and how that breaks down for student maybe who's involved. And then also, um, any proposed new things because teachers may have, you know, and students may have other possibilities that they would like to propose to have there and what that would be. Or if there are some clubs that we have that aren't really there, but are there on paper and maybe we want to add something else and move that away, you know, because years go by before things like that are reviewed and I don't know when it's gonna be here. But this way, we're making sure that we are, um, meeting the students' needs for what they want to be involved in.
So extracurricular activities, the one, the clubs and the sports?
Clubs, sports, all of them, yeah. Just so, just so we, we have an idea.
I think last year was the first year we looked at sports in terms of how much each sport cost us by the first year. And we got to the budget process and that, I don't think we've ever done that before last year.
So just to get it straight to everyone, so rundown of the current ones.
Right.
Um, possible proposals of new ones.
Yeah.
How much it's cost.
And how much it's cost.
And, and the key is how many students are benefiting from that too.
Because you might have, you might, it, might have, um, you know, SAD, which you might have twenty members in it, but it benefits the entire school. So you have to weigh those kinds of different things as well. So you have to weigh those kinds of different things as well.
Okay. And I think, I'm sorry, I think the, um, increasing parental engagement home run program, you know, I've been working on how to get our school back to community school. I think that would be important, I've been working hard to try and get back to there.
That's what I was trying to say. So what about, what about the safety? So I'm thinking that would make sense to have maybe in April or May, because, you know, then you have the most experience with it. Home run program. So you can kind of give us an end of year summary, as well as, you know, some of the approaches and that would include of some of the things that you were discussing, um, Mr. High School Principal, I don't know how to call you. Not Dr.?
Oh, what? Call me Dr. Mario.
No, but, you know, some of the experiences that we're having in terms of engaging parents, both through the home run program, but beyond that as well.
Yeah.
And, you know, as, as Scott was saying, and beginning to make the school a more welcoming, um, institution as opposed to, you know, locking the gates kind of thing.
Right.
You know, so that, that would be part of that discussion.
And I know, I know this has been a while since we talked about it, but I really would love to figure out how we give that educational opportunity to students, all students at some point in high school. From, if you recall, that was when they went on the Washington DC trip and the students came back and reported how much it changed the experience itself, just going somewhere else and seeing things real versus on a computer screen, you know. I, I think we're a remote, low socioeconomic situation, I think having every student have one of those experiences at least in their high school period would be a good thing to try to strive to achieve.
I think we're in pretty good shape right now by breaking down the list and letting this go over. I think the curriculum calendar we can do in January. And I think the community service piece we can do in February. We're already on that anyway.
Started playing that.
Extracurricular activities in March. The, how do we raise the athletic to holistic education, the whole approach in April? And then report on the home run increase parental engagement in May.
Okay, a missing one, so January is, is engagement?
Yeah, January is curriculum calendar.
February is?
February is community service.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, March is extracurricular, clubs, um, and, uh, sports. March, April is how do we raise the athletic program? And May is report on the home run increase parental engagement.
Can I, um, just add on to what Scott was just saying, that maybe as part of our extracurricular thing is that maybe there could be something in terms of what we offer in terms of field trips, whether they're extensive field trips versus, you know, it could be a field trip to the Palace Theater, it could be a field trip to New York City, like I know National Junior Honor Society don't think of New York City every year for the day.
No, they're, they're actually something they wanted to repropose, they do. NJHS since I've been here has taken part in the physics day trip, so they actually go off and they do the science experiments at a great escape, but they have not gone, at least since I've been here, they won't go on the.
They used to go to New York City, um, it used to be a thing, I think that, um, I think it's. I don't mind changing, I know my kids did it sometimes. It wasn't a. What, what, wasn't it? Okay. I'm forgetting now, but, um, you know, so, so what are those opportunities? And that could kind of sort of go with extracurricular, um, but, just to, on what you're saying. And I know you're thinking about the larger, yeah, thing like Washington DC.
But, but I still think it fits in, you know, from a funding perspective, how do we build a model that says we can be that and sort of thing. And I think the, uh, assuming that we actually vote to move forward with distance learning, like we talked about, um, that probably on an ongoing basis would become part of your curriculum, um, calendar.
Right.
When you decide what courses online or distance are you gonna offer.
Right. When you get into a flow of the distance learning.
Right.
September, October, and, uh, November is when we start to create the courses. And December, they're, they're almost on the internet.
Okay.
Because people have to plan for them, so it's a little bit earlier, but we'll put it all.
Okay.
Okay, so it looks like we have our second meeting topics and, um, we've done that. Okay. So, um, so we're moving on to approvals, but before that we need to, to have you officially, you're going to be on board. Are you prepared to say?
Be ready. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of New York and faithfully discharge, according to the best of your ability, the duties of the position, going ahead. Is that where ends it?
Okay, now you can vote.
I'm not that awful, just not in the eye, but you can't refuse why you do that.
Okay, so the first thing, moving along to approvals, first thing on the agenda is minutes. Um, anything on the minutes? I have a couple of things on the fourteenth, uh, the fourteenth. One is if you look at the presentations, um, I'm sorry, reports, um, well, even presentations. What I'd like to request is that in the minutes, it'd be at least a sentence or two, kind of outlining what was presented. With the student representative report, we only need to hear anything that's not included in the report that Tyler submits. But then the others, like the transportation committee, it'd be nice to just have a sentence that says, this is what the transportation committee said, or, you know, proposed or, or indicated. Because it really, this doesn't help anyone who wasn't at the meeting taking notes to know, you know, what exactly, or even broadly, whatever. So that would be my suggestion, not that, if that's true. Okay. Then the other thing is the, um, going down to the committees.
Yes.
There was a mistake there, the finance committee, um, Peter Lawrence replaced Mark Brody.
Yes, yep.
And, uh, the policy committee, Jennifer Field was added to replace, um, Chris.
And it was to remove, it was to, it was to remove me.
From?
Policy.
Yes.
And put her on.
So Heidi and Jennifer.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I missed you, okay.
You're, you're right. No, you had Jennifer here.
Yes, just that now we're adding that as a second change.
So Jennifer replaced Chris, Heidi replaced.
Is it possible, you just said this the same?
I can send you an updated spreadsheet.
Okay, that'd be great, because I'm lucky that I had a memory from a November discussion, so I could make it today.
Okay, then the other thing that we'll have to discuss, I, I have looked my notes from the last meeting, but and we don't have, between now and the next meeting, we'll have to look at what the vacancies are that you'll focus. Each board number has usually two committees every so far. So the policy will be one, and we have to just look at the, the other one will be a legislature.
Legislative liaison.
Legislative liaison, basically, what that has been meant in the past is we expect full-time work contacting all of the legislatures.
For don't.
Basically, it's meant advocacy for fair foundation aid, funding for schools in conjunction with other school districts and vis a vis and so forth, and, you know, we've usually gone to Albany at least once and, you know, lobbied with our legislators and, uh, and in that fact, two years ago, we had students from a big class to participate in a march rally in Albany around that question. And we've had petitions at, at some of the school concerts where parents sign up and urge fair foundation aid for funding and, you know, just a whole bunch.
Presentations here, we've had presentations in our.
Right. Yeah, we had Angela Santa Barbara get, uh, you know, speak at one rally that we had around that question. So that's kind of the things that I'm. Okay, so, uh, anything else on the November fourteenth minutes? Seeing none, we'll go to the nineteenth. Well, first of all, before we go any further, do I have a motion for a consent agenda?
You have to remove the minutes because Heidi was there for those.
Okay, so we'll move minutes, from C, uh, let me just explain to you what a consent agenda means, that we'll discuss each issue, but then we'll just fold all of them together rather than individual discussion. And a little bit of, uh, work throughout for the recording, of course. So is there anything odd here that, aside from the minutes, that would be, need to be, you know, told about with that? Okay, so I, I would move, I would ask for a motion for consent agenda from C through, um, O.
Motion.
On favor?
Um.
So, um, anything on the minutes for, uh, November nineteenth?
When, I, I just have a question, just because I'm looking at it. Um, and does Miss De Ambrosio start? The H R? January sixth.
Anything else on the fourteen, on the, um, nineteenth? No? Okay, bill, uh, budget transfers, anything there?
Um, pardon, the, the. Hold on, hold on.
We wanted to pull on those first, okay.
Separately.
Yeah, so, um, we have a motion for A, this, and a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
P, pose, abstain.
Oops.
And for the nineteenth?
Motion.
Who's gonna make the motion?
I will.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Oh, that's right, this is the one, technically I wasn't there, but I was there, I'm sorry.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, abstain. Okay, so we have two exceptions. Okay, and we still apologize. Okay, so then we'll move on to budget transfers. Any questions there? I have a question, um, I was just curious, Leah. Um, I see that eighty thousand dollars came out of BOSI's, I'm assuming that's occupational education, is that correct?
Yes, so did we, is that going to BOSI's?
Was that because we had less participation in BOSI's occupational education? Okay, so one of the things that I would just kind of suggest that we think about, um, especially looking forward toward next year, is what, if anything, do we want to do to encourage more students to take advantage of those opportunities? Because it really is a wonderful opportunity for people, for us students, who might want to get some grounding in, in some, you know, different occupations. And I, I think that, um, one of the, when I see this, that just says to me, well, maybe we can reach out more and, you know, do better educational, uh, job with our students to let them know of the opportunities that are available. So I, that's, that's all I was wanting to say.
Definitely.
I think that we, that we could do, do a better job of, you know, letting students know what they can, take advantage of. Okay, anything else on budgets, transfers? Alrighty, then the next thing is bills. Anything on bills?
I didn't remember what CD, excuse me, CDW government was.
And that's the, um, SSIP purchase, the first phase.
The SSIP.
A hun- about a hundred and three thousand dollars of that is all of the Chromebook, Chromebook cases.
I'm winking now, I was trying to figure out the acronym, I'm sorry.
It's the Smart School stuff, the one that first phase.
Smart School.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else on bills? I had one, um, fifty seven eight sixty eight, House of Good Shepherd, four point four thousand dollars.
That's special, special placement.
Okay. I just didn't remember. Okay, anyone else on bills? Okay, then we'll move on to treasurer's report, anything there?
Um, are we still, do we still have a plan of moving money?
Yeah, this is through October, there was a large amount moved.
I didn't do any math this month.
But I wanted, I didn't do the math either, but I just, because I know we had, we'd talked about it and there was only some that we moved, and we had talked about moving more in the future, so I just wanted to make sure.
And just, you would benefit Heidi, the interest that we're getting on our money that is, and funds has been on the nature of two ten thousands of a percent, or two thousands of a, of one percent. And, you know, we said, this is crazy, we should be getting better return on the money that we have sitting in these places. And so we found, so, uh, an avenue to, to do that, we're trying to put as much money in there, we're getting at least two to three percent on our money in there, and so it's thousands of dollars a year that we, we're not getting. Okay, um, anything else on, um, treasurer's report, tax collector's report? Okay, I have a question there.
The best.
It, it, it's, I don't know, is it written funny or, or what, but the, the tax levy is in that middle column and that's six million, two hundred thousand dollars. And then the taxes collected basically equals the amount that we return to the county plus the to- total taxes collected, as well, that seems, did we actually collect that amount, that we, that six million dollars?
The five point six is the money that we actually got.
But.
The five point six.
But, so does, that mean we have six hundred thousand that we didn't collect?
Correct.
So what happens, why?
It goes to the county and then they re levy it on their tax bill and then they pay us in March, April.
And ultimately, we will see that.
Yeah, the six hundred and twenty-two thousand plus the eighteen thousand, that's what the county will pay us.
So just gonna get it late, but we will get it.
Yeah.
Do they give us all of the interest too?
They'll give us the eighteen thousand.
So they don't, they don't withhold anything back from the service that we're collecting it?
No.
Oh, that's cool.
They put it under their tax.
Yeah.
You, you see it, you can look it up and you'll see the re levy, school tax, and it's listed as a separate, you know, an account bill.
I figured they'd charge us something.
So when you say they charge.
And then it's up to them to collect the money, not ours.
So do, do they charge everyone to make this money up, or just the people that didn't pay?
The people that didn't pay their taxes.
It's, it's interest under.
County bill.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, moving right along, we have the school tax refunds, any questions there? Schoheri's County School Tax Recapitulations. Anything there?
Exactly.
That's just, um, somebody who didn't pay their tax bill, but they're in Schoheri County. So that goes back to Schoheri County, so that's the.
Oh, so no, it's their, they live, they're a resident over there, but they own one here, for example?
In Carlisle, in Carlisle.
Okay, bus vote date, is it there?
Can we just ask a question on that?
Did we build that around an event that's going on, don't we usually, don't we usually have pulled that the same day as like some concert or something?
Is it?
Yeah, I was looking for the history of it, because most people do it, the budget.
Music in our schools, mom, we try to, if there's usually a concert that, when they do it, I don't know if that is when that is, you'd have to look at the, we could probably find out, all we'd have to do is.
I guess the question I had is why, why don't we do it on the same night as the budget vote? And I think, I talked to Dick, uh, I talked to the former chairman today, and he said, it was always a worry that if budget.
They might, yeah.
But that's dispelled in the last ten or fifteen years, because everybody understands that, that refund, you know, any aid on the buses, and I've never seen buses go down on propositions. It does cost us extra money to run two boats.
Oh, does it?
Yes. So I'm wondering, and you're, every. So I'm wondering, and you're, every other district in the area does it on the same day as the vote.
So it's just another item that they vote for.
Is it? They, they vote on it separately.
Yeah, music in our schools concert is about nine, several, March time.
Which gets people out, if that's understandable.
Yeah.
But people will come to the concert anyway. So do we feel?
I'm just not sure about the timing of the bid and everything.
It'll be fine.
The buses, I'm not sure. I talked to. But if that's fine, it will not affect the delivery of the buses.
The former super did, definitely said that's the reason why they did it years ago. Years ago, you know, twenty, fifteen, twenty-one. But I would make a suggestion that we keep it on the same day as the budget vote.
When's the budget vote?
May, it's May nineteenth.
So are we doing a down payment commitment?
I haven't. We did a letter of intent.
And they're okay not getting the money until after May?
Yes, that is an understanding.
Because I remember.
They're the only one in the area that does.
Because I remember one year we had to do a down payment to hold them. They wouldn't commit to getting here or on time because they were, they were running behind. Something changed with the buses, how, what they needed to do, I don't remember.
Keep on the plate to verify.
All right.
Okay, so.
Change it to the budget vote.
I would entertain an amendment if people are into that, to change it to the budget vote.
Sure.
Some route.
If all in favor of that amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the amendment to do the budget vote. Okay, then bus lease resolution, any comments, questions there?
There's no change to this from what you guys reported, right?
No.
Okay, then we have the middle school library title deletion, anything there? I have something there. I want to know.
Nineteen fifty-seven's copy of the Shenango Valley Tales is for you, I said.
No, 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 I have some other titles I'd like. So what happens to these books? They get tossed in the garbage?
No, essentially the ones, so this, the books on here kind of span a bunch of categories there. They might have damage to them that can't be rebounded, they might have pages missing. In, in most cases, they, it has to do with age and then there's a special formula they use for circulation. If things have not been checked out in a certain amount of time, the library system recommends that you start calling titles. There hasn't been a middle school librarian for a certain number of years, so Ms. Oldman's finally getting around to doing this. What we do is the ones that are damaged, we will, we will call out and throw out. The ones that are still good, generally we put out for students to take once they're called out. And then we put out, any of the others, we can put up for auction. Generally, they, they're thrown out.
Well, could, also, I, let me just give you an example, just, just. I was going through there, which is, I know bizarre, but I have my time. So like, for instance, in, in one of them, they had Science Puzzlers from nineteen fifty-nine. I was really interested to hear what the science puzzles were in nineteen fifty-nine. They had another book, Out of This World, about outer space, again in the nineteen fifties.
Dr. Burley, I.
Wait, 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 I want to.
Any board approval, you are more than welcome to go through all of these titles.
Well, I'm taking the complete guide to Middle Earth. I mean, there are people who are really, like, my son is really into the Hobbit.
That's actually a science text and they're using it next week in science classes.
Oh, really? Good.
Let me just give you a little more, just to give you an example. Understanding musical instruments and how to select your instrument. The gigantic joke book, I love it.
I liked it.
And then there's another one, you must be joking, lots of great jokes.
Can I just ask you, we have a volunteer program. To help us at the school district, if you have all this time.
They will be in the basement for the rest of the year if you would.
So my only question on these books was, is the fact that we didn't have an operating middle school library causing some of these books to be on the list?
Not having an operating library was a, a, a small period of time. And some of these books haven't been checked out in the break of the eighth.
Okay. So that was my only concern.
Yeah, it, it's not just in the last three years, some of these books are approaching seven, ten years of no circulation, some of them have never been checked out, so they're.
Well, I would just make a request. At the point where they go to the basement, after the students have had a chance and anyone else who wants them would have had a chance, I would, before they get thrown out, I would like my chance, is all I'm saying.
We have a dump truck and we can bring them to your house.
No, 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 that's what I'm saying. If you could just let, let, anyone else?
I would love to.
Okay. And I've got some good jokes, you know.
You can't sneeze, some of your eyes will go, no pre-shock.
Okay, moving right along, Cobos Kill Richmond, contracts one, two and three, any questions there?
These are all, these are all existing students, right?
They are, actually one of them is waiting to be ending soon and potentially changing to a different location. But, but up to this point, that all of these students have.
For good cause or it's not going well?
Student is showing that they require a different level of service.
Anything else on the Cobos Kill Richmond? And the BOSI's grant writing, as we discussed, we would authorize up to seventy-five hundred dollars under whichever guise you can get it, three to hopefully, another half of the fifty BOSI. Okay, so we're all, any other questions, comments there? Okay, I would take a vote on the consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose, thank you. Old business, there's none. New business, you got this notice about the Visbo Capital Conference. I've been to that twice, I believe. It's a really interesting conference, it's, it's all about legislative issues, primarily around school funding. On the first day, the first day is, you know, they have a bunch of speakers that really give you the lay of the land. And then the next day, basically, you go to make appointments to see legislators. I, I found it to be a positive experience and, you know, I get to meet some, a lot of those school board members and, and we get to meet our legislators and kind of encourage them to do the right thing. I won't be able to go this year, I won't, I'll be away, but just need to let Andrea know who is interested in going. It is in Albany, it's a two-day conference, Sunday and Monday, February ninth and tenth. If you wanted to stay overnight in Albany, we could probably rearrange that. Or, or you could commute, generally would be your preference. So is anyone thinking of going or interested? Okay, well, you know, I just wanted to just raise it and make sure people are aware of it and look it over and then, then Andrea knows, what was it there?
January.
January, end of January, so, you know.
I'd like to go, I mean, I'll confirm, yeah, for sure.
Okay, great. Okay, so. So we have personnel. Food service helper. Okay, any questions on that? Again, can we do, can we do all these together?
Um, I, yeah, if you'd like to.
Is there, do you want to do this all together?
I'm fine with it today, it's just sometimes.
Yeah, if you want to take a second, hold it over, I'm a geologist, I can do all this.
I, I did have a question on one of them, but not from consent agenda perspective, just as.
So did I, I didn't take a motion consent agenda on appointments?
Yes.
Yes. My first, not motion, there we go.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so food service helper, that's a replacement for someone that is gone. Elementary basketball. Question on that one? Okay, lifeguard, any questions there? Okay, modified basketball coach, anything there, Kevin? Okay, correcting the appointment?
Yeah, that was the one I had a question on. Because I thought we approved point four FTE.
Me too. We did. Yes, it is point four, but I had a question there about tenure, which is not.
Oh, okay.
Correct, so we just had to take the tenure stuff out of there, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I'll be sure to get that from you.
All right.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Okay, does anyone want to go home?
Do we need to go home?
What?
Do we need to go into a second session?
We need to go home.
Second.
Very good, that's what I wanted.
Can we get a vote on that?
Yes.
Put up your hand.
Have a happy holiday.
Are we done? Can we vote?